Thank you. Will the secretary please fill the role?
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Frank.
Here.
Director Orion.
She's not able to be here tonight.
Director Honsar.
Here.
Director Simsek.
Here.
Director Fustar.
Here.
Director Zalinski.
Here.
Director Volteano.
Here.
Director Shriver.
Here. So at the beginning of each meeting, we invite the public to comment on any items on our agenda tonight. I see several of you have signed up. All of you that have signed up want to talk about the health and safety plan, which is understandable. Before we have you comment, we'd like to have Dr. Kreider, our superintendent, provide an update for the district, which then gives you context for any questions or comments you might have. Dr. Kreider?
And thank you, Mr. Shriver. Just the plan here, back behind me on this screen, is just want to take the opportunity to go through and review the current health and safety plan. The health and safety plan that's currently in place was passed at our August 17, 2021 board meeting. As ordered by the American Rescue Plan, it requires all school districts to go through and periodically review the health and safety plan at a minimum of every six months. And then the health and safety plan in itself contains nine different sections that are set up with different types of accommodations and mitigation strategies that are in place. So my goal is first to go through and just review the health and safety plan as is. And then take a look at some further recommendations. So first, starting off, one of the major sections there in the very beginning deals with the universal and correct wearing of masks. At the present time, staff and students are required to wear masks indoors. While the transmission rate in Allegheny County is defined as high or substantial by mention of the CDC, at the elementary level, it is slightly different, where whether it's low, moderate, significant, or high, elementary students are required to wear a mask at the present time. Back when the plan was passed, it was prior to a vaccine being made available to those under the age of 12, and therefore, the board put in into the plan itself that they would come back and revise this section of the plan in regard to universal masking at the elementary level. In regard to physical distancing, at the present time, we look for students being spaced apart from one another to the maximum extent possible. We work in each of our classrooms to make sure that there's a three-foot separation of our students. Movement, we stagger in between the hallways. We adjust for any types of staggered dismissal time from one class to the other. And we also have plexiglass installed in each of our cafeterias where students eat. And the rationale back then, at that time, especially last year, was Allegheny County Health Department considered the plexiglass as a barrier, and if students were sitting across or side to side with one another, it was not required, it was not considered to be a close contact. And Allegheny County since that time has changed that guidance, so the plexiglass no longer provides that barrier in regard to quarantining efforts. There are restrictions to nonessential visitors. We do have field trips that are permitted, provided we can create those field trips in a safe environment. And then transportation accommodations, we looked for a variety of different things. We opened up the availability for students to drive free of charge, provided they still continue to provide registration information, and then also asked for parents to provide transportation as well, if they could, just to reduce any type of congestion on school buses. Contact tracing, we work very closely with Allegheny County in regard to quarantine. With the contact tracing, they have a flow chart that we've gone through and followed. That flow chart, as of December, has been updated based on the updated guidance that the CDC and Allegheny County adopted. And as far as that flow chart of information is provided to us, essentially, the first three parts there, the masking, the physical distancing, and the quarantine guidelines, all go a little bit hand in hand in regard to whether students are vaccinated, whether students are in a full environment of being masked and whether they're not. So the flow chart that schools go through and follow, they're using the guidance off of Allegheny County, use this spreadsheet here to go through, determine one. Was the child fully vaccinated? The term "fully vaccinated" has also changed as of December. And fully vaccinated for children compared to fully vaccinated and completely vaccinated for adults vary slightly. So we take that into consideration. But if students are fully vaccinated, if they're in a masked environment, all go hand in hand with whether or not children need to quarantine. So if they're in that full masking environment, the students, if they're more than three feet away from each other, then there's no need to quarantine. If students are fully vaccinated, whether you're in a masked or unmasked environment, students do not need to quarantine. And it takes into consideration the difference now between the 10-day quarantine and reduces down to the five-day quarantine as far as when students are able to return to school. So that's the flow chart. That's something that we've had up on our website since it's changed. And prior to that, we had the old flow chart up as well to help guide as far as the quarantine guidelines. As those quarantine guidelines go through and change, those are things that we have embedded into our plan that we follow the Allegheny County Health Department and their advice to move through with quarantine guidelines. As far as communication out, we've continuously reported out on the total number of active cases in the district, total number of students who are under quarantine, and report that out on our site. We've reduced the number of emails that have gone out recently just in regard to number of active cases and individuals and contact tracing, just based on the sheer numbers that have been reported. But we continue to update our website. In regard to hand washing and respiratory etiquette, variety of things in place there as far as having sanitation stations set up across each of our buildings, having hand sanitizer available in each of our classrooms, reinforcing hygiene and cough etiquette in classrooms as well. Playground equipment is available for students to use, and we go through and conduct cleaning of all of the playground equipment on a regular basis. Cleaning and ventilation, Mr. McDavid will talk briefly in a little bit about the different types of ventilation projects that we've completed over the past several months in regard to keeping our equipment and technology up to speed with circulating quality air through each of our buildings. We maintain logs for cleaning schedules. We use a variety of electrostatic sprayers to keep the areas clean, especially in large areas. Handrails, stairwells, auditoriums, cafeterias, everything of that nature. Water fountains have been disengaged, water filling stations have been made available with cups. And we continue to offer trading in search of different products in regard to cleaning and sanitation. Diagnostic screening, as students enter our buildings, we do a visual inspection with the students. We ask our staff and families to either keep staff at home or children at home if they're experiencing any types of symptoms. And we report the positive cases out to the community. And we do have antigen testing that is available, have not necessarily got up and running to this point, but we can move forward with any types of antigen testing programs based on the health and safety plan. Vaccines, we've offered several vaccine clinics in the past. At the present time, vaccines are widely available to basically community members, students aged five and above. The vaccines are pretty readily available. And there, we work with local vendors in regard to scheduling. Combinations for students with disabilities, all students are provided with free appropriate publication or public education at all times. Students are still required to follow all elements of the health and safety plan. Accommodations can be provided through the child's IEP, and our team still continue to meet to collect the baseline data, monitor student progress, monitor current educational levels, and determine then if additional accommodations or services are necessary. And we continue to have the Carleton Cyber Academy available as an accommodation for students opting to enter into the cyber academy. Coordination with officials, we do maintain contact through the AIU with the Allegheny County Health Department to receive weekly updates and use them as a vehicle to go through and make any types of interpretations as far as recommendations that come down from the CDC. We also stay in coordination with the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Department of Health, and also through the AIU to get those updates. At a high level, that's a review of what we have in our health and safety plan at the present time that was approved back in August of 2021. So there are some recommended changes. And back in Section A, what I mentioned there at the beginning in regard to masking, the board indicated that they would come back and review the masking policy, in particular at the elementary level, in regard to masking requirements at the elementary now that vaccines are widely available to students between the ages of five and 12. That's an area that the board will discuss this evening. Section B, my recommendation is to no longer include the plexiglasses in areas where food is served, for the reason I stated earlier is that no longer are those barriers serving any significant value to our students in keeping them in school based on the manner in which Allegheny County interprets those. And then also making the recommendation that we can provide food service in areas that are not protected by plexiglass. Recommending that we remove the paragraph in the health and safety plan that talks about moving of students through hallways, one-way directional arrows, one-way staircases, one-way movement, elements of that nature. In Section D, looking at removing language that requires the additional logs to document the cleaning stations that we go through. Rationale there for that is that each of our classrooms, each of our buildings are being cleaned on a daily basis as far as a daily routine now. It will probably most likely continue beyond COVID. And so I see no real reason to keep those additional logs. Recommend that we take the water fountains, we turn those back on and engage them so that individuals who are interested in using water fountains may do so. In Sections E, F, and G, a couple further recommendations there. With the widespread availability of testing with home testing kits, asking that the district only consider rapid testing or PCR testing from accredited agencies to quarantine close contacts. And the rationale there is there's a variety of home tests that are out there that as a district, we don't know necessarily if they're administered properly. We don't know if they were FDA-approved. Makes it very difficult on our end to determine the accuracy of those tests when they come back. And therefore, quarantining other students as a result of those tests, I don't think is in the best interest of those other children. And then also looking at quarantine times, now that the quarantine window has shrunk down to five days, there are children who test positive early in the week. Say, for example, they go home on a Monday evening, they test positive. Their test results don't get back to them until Wednesday or Thursday. By the time we get that information, that child was in school on Monday. Potentially, other students were close contacts to that child on Monday. And when we go through and implement quarantine guidelines, there's a remaining day that the child would have to quarantine. In many of those cases, the child has been at school on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So the recommendation there is for the district to not quarantine students as a result of exposure when the length of quarantine is equal to or less than one day, allowing students to remain longer in school. Section F, reduce the paragraph just to state that the district may pursue antigen testing programs. There is a test to state program that's out there. Again, with quarantine window shrinking down to five days, putting a test to state program may not be extremely beneficial to our students, however. Continues to give us the availability to pursue any types of testing programs that are out there. And then in Section G, or G rather, is to reduce that paragraph down to indicate that vaccine clinics will be made available to the public when there is substantial interest from our community. That way, working with our local public, if there is a need for vaccine clinics, then those are things that we would be able to pursue. If there's not a need, then there's not necessarily a need for that to be in our plan. So the final two pieces of the presentation here provide the recommendations. I listed those. They do align with each section of the health and safety plan in Sections A, B, or A, B, D, E, F, and G as far as the recommendations that are there for the board to consider this evening. Also, real quick, January is School Director Appreciation Month. And it is one thing that as far as school directors dedicate a significant amount of time towards governing at the local level, attending committee meetings, board meetings, attending to emails, keeping up to date and current with research and a variety of trends, and taking a look at policy that is implemented across the district. It's a significant amount of work. It's all volunteer time. It is something that is greatly appreciated, I think, by all of us here in this room. We appreciate everything you do. And at the conclusion of tonight's board meeting, I'll provide each of our board members then with a certificate with their name on there and just honoring each of our board members for their participation and for their service to the community. So as a board, those with us present here and also with us by phone, on behalf of the district and the community, we appreciate all the work you put in and the sacrifices that you make to be a contributing member of the local level. So thank you all for everything you do. That completes my presentation for this evening. We also do have two administrative reports, one from Mr. McDavid and then also one from Food Services as well.
I can do that. Yeah, if you want to open up the... So we wanted to provide everybody with that background and context so that as you had questions, it would make more sense. So now I'll turn back to the open forum. Any agenda item we'd invite you to comment or ask a question about, if you have a sign-up list, if it's easy, we can just run off of this. So first one, did sign up was Steph Megan.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Steph Megan. Or...
Before you speak, Stephanie, just a reminder for everybody, we technically have a three-minute time limit to try to be succinct as possible in respect to your peers, your colleagues. Thank you.
I'm going to do my best. Would have been nice to be able to review those recommendations beforehand. But before I get into that, because Emily Brosnik is mentioned on the agenda, I just have to say, that woman deserves a full-time job in this district. Anyone who teaches kindergarten Zoom for their first teaching experience deserves a Congressional Medal of Honor, first of all. She did great. She liked my kid and thinks he's cute. So please, any position, she deserves employment. She's wonderful. Anywho, I'm sure my fellow parents are going to speak to, I think, a lot of the failures in this, I think, throughout the world to stop this virus and how, you know, they say the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. So I'll leave off the science aspect of it because I want to speak to the legal aspect. I think regardless of, you know, the science here or there, met walls going on here, I don't believe you have the legal authority to do a lot of what you're doing. And so I'm going to read a letter. This is from one of the attorneys that successfully challenged the acting secretary's illegal masking order. And so this was written to Erie County Districts. As you're likely aware, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court recently agreed that the acting Health Secretary lacked legal authority under the Disease Prevention and Control Law of 1955 and the Administrative Code of 1929 to require masks in school. Under the Disease Prevention and Control Law of 1955, county health departments possess more limited powers than the Health Secretary with respect to disease mitigation measures, as county health departments can only exercise such powers that are approved by the Secretary of Health. And so it continues on. So even if arguably, the Allegheny County Health Department had the independent legal authority to require masks, the rescinding of the county's order means that there is currently no basis under the law intended to address disease prevention to require masks in school districts within the county. Public schools do not have any legal authority to require masking. As creatures of statute, school districts only have the powers and legal authority granted by the General Assembly, and the General Assembly has not vested school districts with any legal requirement to force students to wear face masks. While some districts have argued they have some authority under 25 PS 5-510 rules and regulations, safety patrols to adopt and enforce such reasonable rules as it deems necessary and property, this rulemaking power is not unlimited. The school board must operate within statutory and constitutional restraints. Schools cannot make rules that are outside their granted authority from the General Assembly. Considering that Pennsylvania's highest court found the Secretary of Health did not have the power to require masks in schools under the Disease and Prevention and Control Law, it's unlikely that schools, under general powers to implement rules and regulations, possess more power regarding disease prevention than the Secretary of Health. A number of schools appear to believe they must follow guidelines issued by the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. It is incorrect. It is only issued recommendations and guidance. This is not an order, and it has not, and it not must be followed. It cannot order its recommendations be followed. The latest COVID-19 guidance du jour suggests that schools should consider implementing a potentially discriminatory test to state program that forces those who have not been vaccinated or those who are no longer considered fully vaccinated under the ever-changing definition of that term to be subjected to testing, whereas fully vaccinated students and staff need not do so, even though fully vaccinated individuals can still transmit and become infected. Testing students is not a power set forth in the public school code or its accompanying regulations. Those who choose not to receive vaccinations likely have done so for religious, disability-related, or philosophical reasons, all of which trigger protections under the federal and state anti-discrimination laws. A decision that treats any student without a vaccination differently may also trigger protections under the Americans with Disabilities Act to the extent that unvaccinated individuals are regarded as having a disability. Forcing students and staff within a protected class to undergo testing while allowing those who have chosen to receive a vaccination will inevitably lead to litigation. And so a little bit more on that. Finally, I would note that the district must honor medical, religious, and philosophical exemptions to the mask requirements. This district does not. Under 24 PS 14-1419, the School Health Services article of the public school code shall not be construed to compel any person to submit to any medical treatment when the person or parent or guardian of the person, if a minor, objects to the examination or treatment on religious grounds. And the CDC, per the CDC, the use of face masks is a prophylactic medical treatment intended to prevent the spread of COVID-19. There's a link there. Obviously, I can't bring it up. As a result, the district must allow students with religious and philosophical exemptions to be exempted from any masking requirements. This district has not. As a result, parents are permitted to exempt their children from any mask requirements for religious and philosophical reasons, and the district must honor these exemptions. And so schools are now starting to see that there is litigation. They are being challenged. So far, luckily, in the U.S., a lot of these challenges have been in favor of the rights of individuals to make medical choices that fit their families, because the one-size-fits-all medical application does not work. It is not working. And my children, for anyone who wants to argue that they should continue to be forced to mask, my children are nobody's medical plan. My children are not your medical plan. All right, thank you.
Next person to have signed up was Pam Seaton.
Yes. Hello. Short and sweet. Everyone knows that children are far less affected by COVID, and that's a blessing. Why else do you allow sports to continue? Because you must know. I mean, they're not distancing, blah, blah, blah. Everyone knows the governor dropped a mask mandate. That's a blessing too, but I guess not for our kids. Everyone knows kids shouldn't be breathing in their own waste all day long, especially those with medical exemptions. And from what I'm understanding, this district doesn't honor that. So that's astounding to me. Everyone knows masks offer no protection against an aerosol virus. If you can feel any airflow through your mask, it's not working. My grandson attends Carnegie Elementary and has had more viruses than ever this year. He is home with a stomach bug right now, today. If masks worked, there should be less illness. And I don't know, is masking causing more illness? I don't know. Everyone knows we have speed limits, but people continue to die in auto accidents. Children are almost seven times more likely to die in a car than from COVID. So does this mean we should put a light at every intersection and lower all speed limits? Also, kids are almost eight times more likely to die from drones. Everyone knows it's a parent's responsibility to make healthy, master decisions for their kids, not the school board. Everyone knows we need an exit strategy for this masking policy. So I'm urging you to work on this for the sake of our kids. This is beyond overreach of our kids' constitutional rights. Please unmask our children. Thank you.
Next up is Jane Vagan.
Jane Vagan. Of the people in this room, according to the CDC, only four of you are wearing the appropriate mask. Two of them are shameless knockoffs. If you look around, you'll find them. One of them's not wearing them correctly, and one of them is so old, it's not doing anything at all. More importantly, I don't really trust this school to make medical decisions for my children. Through the Vision to Learn Program sanctioned by Carleton, the Vision Learn Program told me that my daughter needed glasses, okay? If I would listen to Carleton and not gotten a second opinion, she'd still be wearing these glasses, causing her harm. My doctor said that she does not need glasses, okay? I don't trust you. I told this to John, John Schruck. He didn't care, okay? John, take him back.
Next up is Susan.
Really? I thought that signed up before me. Okay, Susan Chekansky, 1753 Bar Avenue. Since the beginning of this school year, this district has rejected religious exemptions for masks based on zero policy and procedures, ignoring public school law, PA Constitution, and the Civil Rights Act. The stated reason in a public school board meeting in September was the illegal mandate. This district has policy for religious exemptions because there are existing public education laws. These policies are Core Curriculum 105.2, the BSSA, which I opt out of every year, and I can tell you how if you'd like. 127, medical exams and immunizations, 203 and 209. The date as recent, to date is recent this month, you are still not accepting religious exemptions for masking. You no longer have the illegal mandate for reference, seeing as how you have existing policy regarding religious exemptions already. What policy and procedures do you cite for rejecting religious exemptions for masking at this point in time? I've yet to get an answer. I've been asking for, I don't know, a couple months now. What do you cite as legal justification for ignoring PA Education Law, the PA Constitution, the Civil Rights Act? In October, when the illegal mandate was being enforced by this district, my oldest daughter was having issues with masking. Under the illegal mandate, you were supposed to provide her alternatives, and despite being made aware, you did nothing and were out of compliance. As a result, I took my daughter to her doctor, who wrote her a medical exemption, and I submitted it. This put us into compliance with the illegal mandate. This district responded by telling us she could mask or stay home until a 504 meeting could be had. Of course, no dates for a meeting were offered to my child or us. The medical exemption made it clear how the issue was to be resolved. The mandate was clear too. A medical issue meant no compelled masking. Nowhere in the mandate did it require a 504 plan. We were in compliance. We were also in line with the dictates of our conscience. But this district just couldn't leave Vivian alone. The next day after we submitted her exemption and had it rejected indefinitely, we waited for Mr. Kreider and never got to see him. Principal then made my kid mask and go to class, knowing it physically hurt her face and caused her anxiety. I'd like to point out, she had a negative COVID test that week. Feeling unheard and seeing no recourse at great expense to her family, we've now... we now pulled two of our three children and sent them to a different school. We were kind of done being discriminated against, thank you. Now here we are in January, where two additional families have also had their children's medical exemptions rejected by the district and had their kids forced to mask in defiance to their doctor with literally no concern whatsoever as to what effect that has on their kids. The district has been strong-arming these families into accepting 504 plans for their children in order to honor something other districts accept, without so much as an additional form. What policy does this district cite to do this? Policy 103.1. Unfortunately, nowhere in the policy and procedures does it refer to masking or that parents must accept 504 plans as a condition of attendance for their children. It does say that parents can, quote, "withhold their written consent to the evaluation and/or the provision of services," end quote. They're allowed to reject your 504 plan. As for making these kids stay home without a 504 plan, I can't find any policy regarding attendance that allows the district to tell kids they cannot come to school unless there's an identified communicable disease or a discipline issue. Imagine if your child sprained their ankle and you sent a note in from their doctor. I'm looking at you, not them, because they've heard this. Imagine the school telling you your kid would stay home or walk on it until a 504 meeting could be had. Now imagine you never got a date for that meeting offered and no one returned your calls about it. Next, imagine a school staff member waiting at the door to take your child's crutches away to make them walk on their injury. This is a one-to-one comparison of what all of us with medical exemptions have dealt with and are currently dealing with with this district. I've emailed these concerns to the board with no direct answers at all. The actions of the superintendent regarding religious and especially medical mask exemptions are unethical and constitute harassment and intimidation of these families. His behavior has not been professional, and the board to date has stood behind all of it. All of it. I request the board change its mask policy to optional to best honor the medical needs and the religious beliefs of families in the district. It claims to represent. You claim to represent us. If you choose to keep this forced masking, you have no policy or legal footing to stand on. I've gone through the policy. You don't have any. And I'd request once more that at bare minimum, this board censure the superintendent as the 504 coordinator. Finally, I can demand an apology from this board and staff for the intimidation and the mental stress you put our family through. And I'm saying this especially for my daughter Vivian, who is still dealing with this. Why am I upset? Because I'm still dealing with it. She's in a different school, and she's still dealing with the effects of your decisions. At the time this happened, my daughter was a National Honors Society member, okay? And she was soon to be a student council member of this school. This has had a long-lasting impact on my family, and I have yet to get an apology from any of you. Oh, I'm sorry that maybe it affected your daughter. I'm sorry that maybe it has long-lasting. Maybe, maybe, maybe you're right. Maybe masking kids against their will and against their parents' beliefs might have long-lasting impacts. I'm sorry it made you feel that way. I'm sorry that Vivian's having long... Nothing. I haven't gotten any apologies, and you have no legal standing, and you have no policy to be making these decisions. So I ask you to please change the policy to mask optional. Thank you.
Next up is Brad.
First of all, I do want to say that even though we fight a lot, I do appreciate everyone. Someone is here to do this. Even you, Joe. You know, you're upset with me, but even you. All right, so, big shock. I'm here to advocate for the health and safety plan to have masks optional. As Nina Webb, CNN medical analyst, just recently said, "Cloth masks are no more than facial decorations." I could refer you to the European study that conclude the same thing or the randomized trial in Bangladesh to conclude that surgical masks reduce the spread of adults, not children, by just 11% and that cloth masks are virtually useless. My guess is, though, that you made up your mind at your executive session that this really is largely a ceremonious presentation. However, I'm going to proceed. At no point has the actual needs of children come first. Your reasoning in our dialogues is consistently so that we can keep the schools open. That's right. Your biggest fear is going back to your old-school policies, and those are the greatest dangers to kids. I agree. All right, so, this isn't about science. It's about feelings and maybe fear accountability. I don't know. It's time for that to change. Legally speaking, I know your pressure from the state. I know your pressure from the county. But the county has no indoor mask mandate. So where do we get the authority to have a mandate for kids in school? The group that is least likely, by orders of magnitude, to be affected by this. Now, I brought charts I'm going to share with you later. The thing is, maybe this, maybe this hurts kids. Maybe this hurts their emotional development, not to see a face. Just maybe. I don't know. I don't have a trial on that, but I'm guessing millions of years of evolutionary history may prove otherwise. I urge you to hear the words of us, to listen to us. We're coming to you, attempting to reason. You were wrong about the school closings. You ignored your constituency. We overwhelmingly voted for masks to be optional. We voted against that. You were wrong about the illegal mandate that you all stood behind. The superintendent seems to make up rules as he goes along. Admittedly, we're trying to find the most logical way. It's been, we're in our third calendar year of this. The grace period has expired. This is not March 2020. You're stuck there. Your mitigation strategies have not worked. You know who's getting COVID? Everyone. None of this stuff is working. We're all getting it, again. We're three times, or however many times vaccinated. None alike, the righteous and the sinner, are all getting it. By the way, there's still zero deaths in Allegheny County since July of this age group. I brought charts, graphs. I brought CDC charts to corroborate it. And I also brought an article on the CDC study that they base this information on from The Atlantic, not exactly dovish on COVID policies. And we'll explain it to you, if you're interested.
Next up is Brittany. Brittany, yes.
Sorry, everyone. She would be wearing a mask, but she's too young to understand it. Just in case anyone is wondering.
We don't care.
I'm here tonight to discuss why it's so important to continue the mask mandate here at Carleton. Not only do I have facts, but I have real-life experience. I hear people say for first that it's discriminatory. Wearing a mask is not discriminatory. You don't know what discriminatory is until you have a child of color. This is nothing. People keep saying the following. Can wearing a mask make it harder for my child to breathe? The answer is no. Masks are made from breathable materials that will not block the oxygen. People say, "Mask interferes with my child's lung development." No, that's because oxygen throws through and around the mask while blocking the spray or stick particles that may come through the virus to the mask. Masks trap the carbon dioxide. No. Carbon dioxide is very tiny, even smaller than respiratory droplets. They cannot be trapped. Masks lead to a weaker immune system. No, wearing a mask does not weaken your immune system or increase your child's chances of getting sick. These four myths were debunked by doctors Dickerson and Goldberg, who are both professors of pediatrics at the University of Cincinnati, and they both run the Asthma Center and Pulmonology Division there. Scientific proof. World Health Organization published a study in May of 2021 that compared potential COVID-19 infection rates with masks versus no mask. Face masks reduce the chances of infection by more than 80% with a mask. The chance of infection was 3.1% compared to 17.4% when not wearing a mask. I would like to think that part of the reason why Carleton has not shut down any of their schools is because of the mask policy. I work in a Pittsburgh public school where we've had to close several times. Lastly, I would like you to hear this. Masks do work. My brother, who is fully vaccinated, tested positive for COVID. But because of him wearing a mask, my mom wearing a mask, and my dad wearing a mask, they were not, they did not catch it. My cousin Jessie and her husband Matt, same thing. Matt was positive, but Jessie wore her mask all the time, social distance from him, and she remained negative. Masks do work. It's a small inconvenience to keep our schools open. I encourage you to please keep your mask policy to keep not only my son safe, but my daughter, who's not able to be vaccinated, safe for when her brother comes home from school.
Thank you. Next up is Deanna.
Hi, my name is Breanna Maddio. I live in the 588 county, and I just go to town over here. I'm just here not to, you know, argue anybody's facts or to try to school you on them. The facts are out there. And I'm just here to offer my support for moving, masking some way, shape, or form, whether, you know, you want to more closely tie it to the Allegheny County health rates as a compromise, but to keep the transmission rates down, especially with the reduced quarantine times. You're going to have contagious kids in schools while they're still able to spread the virus. The masks do help. I agree wholeheartedly that this NIOSH 95 approved mask is the correct mask. And the CDC has asked everybody and recommended for everybody to upgrade their masks. Omicron's a different animal, and the cloth masks are not as effective. Would never argue that. But they are somewhat effective. And I think for those of us who have families who, you know, can't afford to get sick and could potentially bring home these illnesses from the schools, you know, it's just a very small thing to do for greater humanity. And, you know, I'm, I hate having to ask anybody to do anything that they're not comfortable with. I don't think anybody likes to do that. I would, I hate to have to ask somebody to do something for me that they don't want to have to do, but I do it every day. I happily wear this mask because I care about everybody, even the people who don't like to wear them or don't want to wear them, still wearing them. So wearing these masks for them because I care, and I don't want anybody to get sick. And I don't care what the death rates are. I mean, I do, but I... Nobody wants to be sick, period. So it's not a matter of whether or not you would die from it or whether or not this age group would die from it. Nobody wants to be sick. Nobody wants to be out of school. I certainly don't want the teachers to be out of school. I don't want it to, for them to bring it home to their families. And, you know, they have kids to take care of as well, you know? So it's just for everyone's, just overall health and safety. Again, I'm not here to argue anybody's facts or to, you know, attest what, you know, the arguments that have been brought here tonight. Just my personal support is for the policy, and I just wanted to come and show my support for the masking policy.
Thank you. Last person to sign up is Amy.
Good evening. I, again, I didn't come to argue law or anything like that. Again, I also support masks. All of us, no matter if we agree to wear masks or not agree to wear masks, we're all very good people. We love our children. We're here to do what's best for everyone. Obviously, there are unique situations for every individual child. I get that. Sometimes when we're in a position where we all look out for the betterment of everybody. I too have a lot of family members who have autoimmune attacks. Even my husband, we've had, we've lost several friends to COVID. A lot of people think it's not real. Honestly, someone made the comment, "Could children have been more sick?" Mine have not. We haven't been sick since COVID started. We are big mask swears. We even take even more precaution where we have a little group of friends that we only go out amongst each other. So if we're going to go to a party, it's always these five friends and their children. We don't, and that's my thing. When you're going to school, I understand some people don't want their children to wear masks. They talk about the psychological effect. I feel that your children are going to deal psychologically, however you train them or teach them to deal with their situation psychologically. This is probably, when I look at my, my mother, my in-laws, grandparents, what they had to go through when they were children in school is nothing compared to having to wear masks at the school every day. I mean, they were worried about the war, bombs dropping on them. They had to hide under their desks when a siren went off. That's intense. That's stress. Having to wear a mask just in case you don't get your friend sick because you're going home to your grandmother who's in stage IV breast cancer or has an autoimmune disease. We need to think about, I know we think about our children. We love them. That's what our parents are for. But being in a position, we also need to look out for the betterment of everybody. So that's basically what I, I just still support wearing masks. I think it's fantastic. Knock on wood, we have not had COVID. And my children are not vaccinated as of yet. They're working towards their second vaccine, so they're not fully vaccinated. It's just amazing nervous when I think about what the numbers could be. Thank you. Oh, sorry, my name is Amy Jenkins. This is my first time speaking, and I live at 39 Craig Avenue.
So that is the kind of the people that have signed up proactively to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda, sir? Gradually?
Greg Dugger, I'm living in Crafton. I wonder if it would be helpful to help the warning of my child, my children. Both of my children have letters from their pediatrician stating that masks are harming them. That nobody here cares. This has been 11 school days since we turned out that letter in. And they're being forced every day against mine and against their doctor's best interests. Who cares about my children? Masks might be fine for some, but they're not fine for mine. Why are we playing this game of 504? Why? If a child had to wear a mask and we're in different times, would we still do this? The answer is no. Everybody knows that we would not make them go to school without a mask until we play this silly game of having to go through a 504. It's absolutely ridiculous that nobody cares for the well-being of my children. It's frustrating that I have to choose between sending my kids to school or keeping them home. That's what I was told. It's not right. I don't have a legal, I have to send my kids to Crafton. That's, Crafton's my school district. We don't have school of choice. The way this board and the way the superintendent is acting, I don't want my children going there. It's uncalled for, that no one cares how my children are being affected by these masks. It does not work for everybody. And that's when you guys need to understand that, and you need to make the decision that is not a one-size-fits-all bag. Nobody cares about my children and their medical needs. It's uncalled for, and it's got to end. I'm asking you guys to give parents the choice to make the decision for their children. It's the only way that can be done. Thank you.
Greg, as a side note, if you have not yet had a 504 schedule, if you're willing to stick around tonight to get a date and time to work for your family and superintendent.
I have not had one scheduled, no.
Where's your policy that can require that? Where is it?
If we were before COVID...
It doesn't exist!
And my child had to wear a mask to school, would you make them not wear one until a 504 was completed?
You sprained your ankle.
That's my question. We would not. You guys are being, you guys are singling people out who have medical needs, enforcing masks on my children more than they have to be. It's uncalled for. They're roadblocks.
Is there anybody else who would want to speak while I'm adjutant at it tonight? Have the questioner come?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'd like to know where the metrics are to prove the effectiveness of this health and safety plan.
Thank you.
So you've been tracking everything all along. We get inundated with case updates. You're contract tracing everybody. You're keeping up with everybody's vaccine status. Where are the metrics that demonstrate that your health and safety policy is effective?
Great. That's a good question. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the data that we would point to would just be in regard to the number of students that are being quarantined as a result of...
You have more, you have more students quarantined than ever before.
That's correct.
You have more cases than ever before.
Right.
You're not controlling anything with your masking policy. And the health and safety policy has failed to be about health and safety, and it's about controlling fear. That doesn't work.
Exactly, right.
Everybody gets to make up one mind. That's their own. You don't get to make decisions for everybody else. And everybody is ignoring the mental health aspect of this. No children under the age of nine died from COVID since it started in Pennsylvania. Not one single... Not one single child. The second highest death factor for children five to 10 is suicide. Suicide. Second leading cause of death in that population is suicide. The suicide rate for adolescent girls has gone up 57% since this pandemic has started. Who is paying attention to health and safety of our children? Our children are not at risk of dying of COVID. They are at risk of mental health issues. We're not paying attention to it. We're focused on the wrong threat, and we're creating new ones. I'd also like to know what you're doing to improve the education for these children that are quarantined. You're denying them access to education. My children have been locked out of Carlington for 26 days in this, in this second report card period. No in-person instruction, and they're just forced to make it up on their own. Why isn't your health and safety plan focusing on the mental health of what that does to a child? Why aren't you focused on programs to have these kids catch up? A hybrid learning plan? Why aren't we focused on tutors? Why aren't we communicating with these kids as much as we are case rates when they're out? We can do tons of other things besides talking about case rates and managing fear.
No answer, right?
I would like an answer!
Good luck. You're not going to yell. Not one that makes any sense.
We, we by law shouldn't. And we generally try not to comment on individual items in a meeting like this because it's public. I would encourage you to also have to reach out to superintendent if you have some-
I have. I've met in person. I've reached out to the, to the principal. I've scheduled meetings. I've voiced all of this. I've surfaced all of this. I, I've talked to the principals late, as recently as today.
So we should just let everyone bring answers to the next question, right?
Any other-
Tell us though.
Any other-
You need to make up one mind. It's yours, not mine.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Moving on in the agenda then. To the board, under section two, we have previous meeting minutes. So I entertain a motion to approve items number one, committed to the December 7th, 2021 meeting. Two, committed to December 27th, December 7th, regular meeting. Three, the committee meeting of January 11th, 2022. So the motion to approve those three. Second, thank you, discussion. Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll vote. All those who say aye. Oppose, nay?
Aye.
Thank you, Suzy. You start off that. And, or extensions?
Yeah, I abstained because I was not at all of the meetings.
Okay, George, thank you. Petition to pass.
If you have a majority of the hall, you don't need a majority in the floor.
Alright, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Under section three, a report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed potential litigation matters and personnel issues. Now, I'm trying to, the superintendent has now listed the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. We also have Mr. Minford, director of our food service, is here for a report and update from Aramark.
Thank you all for your time tonight. I just wanted to give a little update on the food service and how well we've been doing this year as compared to last year, which of course, last year, we were mostly remote through all of September, October, November, and December. As you can see by our report of September, we almost quadrupled all of our total meals sold for the entire month of September. With that being said, also, all of our reimbursements have come back as well. Through last year, we've noticed, or through this year, we've also noticed that last year, we did not have any of the students in school. So none of the students really came out to all of our remote sites to pick up meals from any of them that we've had out. This year, the students are in school. They're eating. They're eating a lot. They're eating a lot more than I've ever seen, but I also started enduring COVID. Overall, for the entire four months that we've been in school, we've made over $114,000, or $111,000. With that being said, all of it will also go back into the cafeteria. We've started, all of our tables have started to be replaced and update everything in the area.
You replace the tables with new, new equipment?
We are replacing a lot of the new, a lot of the old equipment with new equipment. So I'm trying to get out, sorry about that. A lot of our tables are from when they redid all of the cafeteria in the first place. So a lot of them are breaking. Mr. McDade has helped me along the lines of replacing most of them. Also, we're trying to do refrigerators and such like. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And Mr. McDade just had a brief facilities report as well.
I think when Aramark does a presentation, they should bring samples for everybody. Just, that's just my opinion. We had a facilities committee meeting last week, and we went over some of the items that we've been working on here. Also, I'll give a brief review of that, that meeting. At the high school here, last year, we put all new ceiling unit vents into this building that, that was preceded by upgrading all the rooftop units. Now, starting next week, we're going to finish the entire HVAC project with updating the 15 remaining wall-mounted unit vents. That project should take about anywhere six to seven weeks. So that, that project is being run by train. It's, it's been a very successful project. So hopefully, we don't, we don't run into any problems. It should be a very simple project to undertake and complete. At Crafton Elementary School, our HVAC project at Crafton Elementary School is 98% completed. I met with HAV Tech last week about submitting a payment for them and holding back some money for their punch list. So there's very few items left on that project. There's some HVAC control work, and it's also a little bit of work still to do in the high, in the auditorium at Crafton Elementary School. And then that project will be completed. We replaced all the units in that, in that facility. We got the, the direct air units functioning at much greater capacity. So once again, that project has been a very successful project. We're looking at Crafton Elementary School to continue with that building. We're going to be looking at replacing all the windows in that building. That project has led to working, doing some masonry repairs. Architects in that building today looking at that project. So we're going to move forward with that. That, that should be probably put out the bids hopefully sometime in the next three or four months for the window part of that project and the masonry part of that project. And then, then we're going to look at doing some other things. The fire stairs, the exit stairs in that building. Water infiltration is coming into that building. We're going to try and wrap all that in to that project to get that school in a better envelope of that building. And while we're doing that, we're going to look at Carnegie Elementary School. We're going to take a walk through that building and do a feasibility study on that facility and look to see if there's anything in that building that could be upgraded and with our Esters money and move forward with that. That building, the HVAC, in that building has been functioning very well. And so the windows, we updated all the window hardware, all the windows last year in the summertime. So, but we're going to take a harder look at that building and see if, if there's other items in that building that we can, we can look at and use our Esters money on. The high school here, the roof project here, the, I recommend that the whole roof get done this year because of the pounding water up on top of that roof. So I'd like to get that on the board agenda next month, approve that, so we can lock the contractors in so the pricing doesn't go up on that. So you'll see that come across next, next month at the, at the board meeting. We had six vendors bid on that job, and the lowest bid came in at $259,495. And that's a full replacement of that roof, insulation and everything. So I thought that was a very competitive bid. So, you know, once again, I'm going to try and get that on the agenda next month to lock those contractors in. The, the auditorium sound system here is being installed. They just wrapped up some work today on it. So hopefully, by the end of this week, all of our auditorium sound will be updated with the help of Hilltop Church, Hill City Church. So that project's moving along really well. I think that's all that we went over last week. And any questions at all for me?
How many years is that? We do like to do the four roof.
The roof?
Yeah.
How, when was it last done? The roof was done in, it's about 23 years now. Was the last time this roof, roof was done.
So then the new roof would be?
Then you'll get, on this roof here, you'll, we'll get a 30-year warranty on it. And like I've recommended to the board, the existing roof, the, the remaining roof that needs to be done, the membrane is still in pretty good shape up there. So if we do a recode on that with the, with the, with the material, we'll get a 20-year warranty on that. And it will probably save us close to half a million dollars to do a recoding of this roof instead of a full replacement. But we got to do it within the next couple of years because if, the longer we wait, the worse shape that membrane is going to be in, and we're going to lose that opportunity to do that.
So are you saying though for the four roof, the water spawning and stuff?
Yeah.
It's like underneath is not structured.
There, there's some lucid, there's some wet insulation out there. It's not, it's, it's not in horrible shape with that wet insulation. The roof isn't tapered properly to the roof drains up there, and that's what's causing that. And with, with the wet insulation and replacing everything out there. That will qualify for Esters money, so the, the money we got in that fund will pay for that project. But, and then we'll taper that roof. We'll put all new insulation. We'll taper it properly to the floor, to the roof drains up there. I've put a scupper up there so the water will flow off that roof. But that roof needs to be of replacement because of all the pounding water we've got in years up there. Any other questions?
You answered all of my questions at the committee meeting, so.
Okay. Alright. Once again, anyone ever has any questions on any of the projects, feel free to get hold of me. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDade. Thank you, Mr. Minford. As far as reports, that's all we have for the season.
Thank you, sir. Looking at committee reports, the December meeting, the reorganization meeting, updated the committee assignments for the years. We have a couple of good people tackling committees. Anyone have a preference of where they start? George, if you're still there remotely, do you want to address Pathfinder? Give us any updates, if there are any of Pathfinder?
Sure, Jim. The last meeting of our Pathfinder board was in November, so I reported on November. We will have a meeting tomorrow night. I'll report on, I'll be reporting on tomorrow night, February. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, George. Suzie, I don't have my list in front of me. Do you have any updates?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Leanne O'Brien is not here for Parkway. We can... She's in, yeah, we can do that. So we'll, we'll look for a Parkway update. Unless you have one, Dr. Crater?
No.
Let me look for that. The next meeting. Shazda.
Kellin.
Except I was only at the last meeting, so.
They just in our group. Josh, you can take it on. I think we did it over that last time. We got the legal update? Yeah, there hasn't been a meeting since the last time.
Thank you. All three of them, so. Legislative PSBA?
Okay, um, yeah, so PSBA, I'm reporting that the governor is planning to present the state budget on Tuesday, February 8th. So that's something we should always pay attention to. There were a couple of bills signed into law, House Bill 412, which is now Act 91 of 2021. It's to provide substitute teacher flexibility. So there are a couple of things happening to assist us in short, staff shortages, which would be, you know, our ability to have substitute teachers in, and also buses. So I'll talk about bus drivers in a minute. But this, this new law is allowing retired teachers, and they're eligible to fill teacher vacancies on an emergency or short-term basis. Schools can use eligible college students and recent graduates of education programs. Educators with active Pennsylvania certificates and those who are comparable by the state certificates can serve a day or three. So it opens up some options for us, you know, if we possibly have some shortages. I also wanted to talk a little bit about this with the Department of Transportation and coordination with the Department of Education. Is there allowing a change to CDL, driver's license skill test, to help with the bus driver shortage? So they're cutting out one portion of that, and that's the under, they'll put engine components. That's one part of the test that they have to keep for CDL. But they don't have to necessarily pass that part to get the CDL in order to be a bus driver. So that's nice to know that we have some, some help in this staff shortages that there's been happening. So that's PSBA legislative. Will we go into education about it? Okay, so we did, we canceled our January meeting. We really didn't have much for the agenda. But I will report that the MAGNY application, Maggie Scholarship application, that was the topic of conversation. They were hoping to have it active by January 15th, which was a couple of days ago. So that scholarship is out there, should be out there. I haven't had an update since earlier in January, like we canceled that meeting. So the intention was to put it on, but act, acted by the 15th. I'm not sure if it had been. But a submission date was anticipated on March 15th for the MAGNY. So, great.
That's it.
Great, thank you. Thank you, all the committee leads. Administrative reports, I think you've already done those. Any other business before we move on to section four? Alright, board, on, under section four, we have several items. Let's tackle items one and two first. I entertain a motion to approve number one, 21, 22, conference and field trips as submitted. And then number two, to approve and adopt the PSBA principles for governments and leadership, outlining a commitment to lead and provide student opportunity to grow and achieve. A motion for those two items.
Seven. Seven.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions? If not, we'll vote. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carried. Sorry, Suzie and George, I keep forgetting on that air verse. My apologies. So item number three, under section four, is meant to include any potential changes for a health and safety plan. We've had a chance to hear Dr. Crater's comments. There's several areas where he's recommending some changes to the health and safety plan. We can adopt any or all or none. So maybe before digging into anyone, does any board member want to start by sharing any recommendations or any thoughts that they have on this topic?
I have actually two lines of questioning, like follow-up questions from the president, Dr. Crater.
Yes.
The first one, can you pull up the quarantine diagram? I have it on my phone, but I had some clarifying questions about that diagram. So we look at students and we follow it. Student, are you vaccinated? Yes, no. So, I mean, that's pretty straightforward. If no- If no, then, you know, less than three feet, there's two options. One is you can quarantine, if you're not, if you're not vaccinated, you can quarantine for five days and then mask for another five, and also try to get tested. Or you can participate in the, the, the test to stay program. Uh, and so that's if, if the distance between them is less than three feet, and I think our, we're generally three, at least three feet is the way we have everything set up, right?
Yes.
So then between three to six feet, um, which should be safer, it says, uh, were they wearing masks consistently correctly? If the answer's no, um, then quarantine for five days, mask, and then another five. Is, it looks like there's an error there, because should there not, should it not be no, under that no, shouldn't it be four, participate in the T T S program? See what I'm saying? And the same, you see the same thing?
Like it should be the same as the other?
Yeah, anytime, anytime you have that no answer, so, I mean, the most, of all of those, the least, you know, as we get into a safer environment, the way that flow chart says is we're being more restrictive on the quarantine, and that does not make any sense to me. So is it just an error in the flow chart because they couldn't fit? Or, because I think that's an important question from my perspective.
Do you consider the left of the box, should we make the one above it?
Yeah, I mean, if I'm looking at this, so, if you go up, this is like the least, this is the least safe, because, you know, distance is more important than masking. So that's the least safe situation, and so we, we're giving two options. You can, if you're, you can either quarantine for five days, mask, or participate in T T S, or T T S. And then we have something that's a safer environment, and if the answer's the same, no, and you scroll down there, it's like this says the T T S doesn't apply. That's not, that can't be right.
That should be the same as the other.
It should be the same, and then if you go down farther, this is, you see the same thing replicated here, where it's under that no, again, that T T S is not included there. That's my first question, is that an error or is that correct? Because that doesn't make any sense to me.
And what's, Dr. Dr. Do you mean testing, Gary?
Right, so we're not in the test to stay program.
So that, that was my next line of questioning, about that.
Right, so we don't do the test to stay. I think the chart itself truncates after this piece right here, where it's, it's just a simple no, and then that, that component ends, um, based on, based on the quarantine guidelines. So then they, they quarantine for the five days, and then they return back with masking for, for an additional five days.
I know that's what the chart says, but is that really what the requirement is, that T T S is not an option if you're between three to six feet?
Oh, it is an option.
It is, okay, so that's an error in the chart.
Yeah, so that's...
That's, that should be assumed on both of those, both of those no answers that have the five-day quarantine, we should read that as though saying, well, if we have T T S, that's an option. That's an alternative.
Yes.
Okay, so that's my first line of question. The second is, can you explain more about the test to stay program? And if we're in it, what that means, kind of any kind of hurdles, or if we're not in it, why not?
So the test to stay program, one, you need to be registered with the, with the state. Uh, they go through Ginkgo BioWorks to do their test to stay program. There were some small changes when they first came out with things. Originally, the test to stay program was only available to, uh, districts that had universal masking policy, that you could implement the test to stay program. Since that time, they've indicated they've expanded that into, uh, districts that have mask optional, um, but then only the individuals who were masked properly in that environment qualified for that program. So if you weren't masked properly, then you didn't qualify for a test to stay program. Moving, moving through that, um, yeah, as far as that test to stay, you either qualified for it or, or you didn't. Um, and then when you qualify for the test to stay, they have different parameters. Originally, test to stay was brought out when the quarantine period was ten days long. Now it's down to five days. So originally, in order to test to stay in school, you had to be administered a COVID antigen test on school property, um, within one to three days of your expected quarantine, and then once again, between five and seven days. So the program doesn't necessarily make as much sense as what it did when you were under the, under the ten. It was, it's also only designed for individuals who are quarantined as a result of in-house exposure. So if you have students who are, uh, exposed, if quarantined as a result, external exposure outside of school, then, then the program, you don't qualify for the program. So it has to be exposure during school. Um, our exposure rates during school are very low, based on the universal masking and then also the distance that we have between our kids. Uh, so there's very little number of students who actually qualify for the test to stay program under what we currently have.
And so, but we're not registered to stay?
Not yet.
Why not?
Uh, based on the number of, of students that we've quarantined, uh, we don't have many kids that would qualify for, for the program itself, but is something that we, we can pursue. There's an application you need to apply for and move through.
But there's no, is there any added cost to the district or anything like that?
No.
It's just, it's just a matter of doing the paperwork for it.
Correct, it's, it's a paperwork and then just the ability to administer those tests on-site, uh, during those, during those scheduled programs.
If we're, if we're registered, is there any concern that we would not be able to perform that testing?
I don't think there's any concern.
About that?
Just based on the, the low number of students that we have, that we could implement that, and the, the duty would fall either on, uh, school nurses to go through and do that, that testing protocol, or, uh, any school official could do it as well, as, as long as they're trained.
And just to, just to back to you real quick, so, but in order to be able to participate in, in order for a student to participate in that, if they, you know, in order to basically get out of quarantine by participating in the test to stay, A, even if we don't have a mandatory masking policy, the student, the student himself would have to have been wearing a mask, and two, would have to have contract, we would have to think, or, I mean, how, how do we establish that they contracted it in this?
Well, it wouldn't be contracted, it would be exposed. It's only for exposed, not for, not for students who have to.
Yeah, so, so it would require non-exposure in the school, so the two predicates are exposure in the school and wearing mask properly. If the student was not wearing the mask proper, was not wearing a mask, then they would not be able to participate in the test to stay, and they would have to go into quarantine.
That's the way I understand it, the most recent updates.
I would assume that you'd have to have parental permission?
Naturally, there's a consent form that you would send out. Uh, the consent forms, there's, there's some that they have online, and then there's also , uh, paper copies as well, you can sign off.
Yeah, okay. I mean, where, where I'm going with it is, I mean, one of my main concerns is keeping kids in school, and I understand that, I mean, if you look at quarantine policy, if, if having not had universal masking over the last several months, we would have had maybe between fifty to a hundred students quarantined that were not quarantined, correct? But that was under the old quarantine regimen.
Correct.
This is a different quarantine regimen, and I think, I don't think that's irrelevant, so, okay.
Yep.
You answered my question, thanks.
Yeah, so the language that I recommended in, in the recommended update provides us the opportunity to, to pursue a test to stay program if we think it would be valuable to our kids.
For the record, I do think it's valuable.
Any other specific questions like that, or general comments on the health and safety plan?
Um, I'd like to make a...
Chairman, I have a comment. Um, at a, um, down at Get Together, this past Sunday, um, a couple said that their six-year-old first grader got, the doctor said, the child got a bacterial infection from wearing a mask for six hours. They suggested that in schools where masks are required, or if, in schools where parents accept their children wearing masks, that masks be available to be changed after three hours, so that they're not in the same mask the whole day.
Understood, George, that's a good suggestion, Dr. Crater.
That would be in section A.
Yeah, and presently, as far as the, the number of masks that we have in our building, uh, students are able to be issued a mask upon arrival, and then during the course of the school day, um, if students do have a problem with their mask or request a change, um, or in many cases, if a teacher notices that the student is having either problems with their mask or their mask is, um, filled with any type of debris that shouldn't be there, that kind of stuff, that, uh, very easily, they can go down to the nurse's office and get a new one. In some cases, uh, some teachers have additional masks on hand as well to hand out to students in that cases, um, uh, for situations of that nature. But at the present time, we don't have any language that says that, um, anything to, to change a mask at a, at a certain time of the day to eliminate the length that they're wearing the same mask. Uh, it's not to stop any kids from being multiple masks at the school and changing them out during the course of the school day either. But they are available.
Okay, thank you. I'll let the parents know.
Okay.
But I do have a second thing to say about, uh, section A. I really do feel that with the, uh, problems that masks cause with the mental health of children, John, we have to, I know it's, it's not supported by the rest of the board, but I feel that parents should be the ones to determine whether they're...
Got it, good, thank you, George.
Um, I would like to second what George said. We see that with the vaccines available, the high vaccination rate of our school districts, no deaths and very few hospitalizations for kids under the age of twenty-five, transmissibility is unknown at the time, the validity of masks are now being questioned, um, they're saying it comes through the average mask. There could be what-ifs with masking, maybe there are long-term effects such as lack of non-verbal and verbal communication in these kids, like George and other parents mentioned, mental health. Um, there are other schools that are mask optional right now that are having less cases than we are with mask mandatory policy. So I believe that the responsibility of wearing masks should follow the parents and their children, and I believe parents know what's best for them, so I, I know how this works, but I guess I would make a motion to make mask parental choice or optional in health and safety plan.
If Jennifer makes that motion, I second it.
Can we have a motion and second that needs to be processed?
Correct, I was just going to comment on that. So we weren't quite at that point, but George and Jessica, we, uh, will proceed. Um, so there is a motion on the table to make, to adjust the health and safety plan to make masks optional at Carlington. Um, are there any questions or further discussion points on that topic before we go?
I, I did have one, so I didn't think about it, and maybe it's not material to vote, but, um, with the test to stay, if a kid, because most of that on the flow chart is focused on, are you vaccinated or not, that's kind of, but, um, could a kid who's not, who is vaccinated, and the parents want him still to get the test, can they still get the test, the antigen test at school? Or is that something the school would not be able to do under the program, because it's funded by someone else?
It's not something that we could do under the, the test to stay program, uh, but we do have...
We can do it anyway.
We can do an antigen test program that would allow pretty much anybody to, to get tested if they wanted to, yes. And it, it actually, it goes through the same network of, uh, Ginkgo Bio.
But the kids can get tested here if the parents say, it's not like they have to make a point of MedExpress or go call their doctor. I mean, the doctors are furloughed, the kid, if the parents think the kid needs an, an antigen test, they can do it here.
The only, the only criteria that we have with Ginkgo outside of the test to stay program is that the child would need to be symptomatic here at school.
Okay.
Is, I think the way it's worded. Yes, they would have to be symptomatic.
Any symptom of COVID.
Which is pretty broad.
Chairman, I would roll.
And to clarify Jude's question further, if we were to do that sort of testing, would the intention be to follow the same T T S procedures, meaning, um, the requirements, masking requirements to do that?
Not necessarily, I'm just thinking of, if a kid has one symptom, and sometimes, I mean, I don't know if you try to get a COVID test daily, but it's not very easy, and if even with you go through your pediatrician, it's like the next day, and you make an appointment, and then you may not get your answer, because they did so many, you may not get your answer for three days.
Right.
Whereas if you just do it at the school, and it's, you've got a cough, or, you know, you had a fever last night, um, or something like, you know what I mean, it's like something that doesn't necessarily have to keep the kid out of school, but you can give the test, and it can get the answer fast. That's, that's, that's what I'm, okay, that's what I'm...
So I was asking if we have a supply of tests that could accommodate that?
Yeah, we currently have supply, uh, if we opted into the program, they would reissue additional, additional tests to us as well. And apparently, from, what they've told us is that they would be able to keep up with demand.
Great. So recording secretary, we're going to do a roll call vote on the motion on the table to adjust the Carlington health and safety policy to be a mask optional.
Okay.
Paul.
Apologize, this is my first one. Director Apple?
No.
Director Frank?
Yes.
Director Honschar?
Yes.
Director O'Brien?
She's not here tonight.
Director Pushkar?
Is that Pushkar, sorry?
Yes.
A little hard to hear. I vote aye.
Director Sunset?
No.
Director Boglione?
Yes.
Director Zledski?
No.
Director Fiver?
No.
Question would fail, three, yes, five, no.
So back to the health and safety plan adjustment recommendations, any other comments or questions or discussion around any of the other recommendations from Dr. Crater to adjust the health and safety?
So then, uh, getting back to A, we had, um, I think Dr. Crater mentioned aligning the, um, elementary school with the policy with the high school policy, and other recommendations are available, or, or, if...
Speak up.
I'm sorry, there's one more.
It's hard to hear you through the mask.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Um, so regarding, uh, the, uh, updating section A, um, you, you've recommended, Dr. Crater, that we, uh, align the elementary school policy with the junior, senior high school policy, because now, um, vaccinations are available for all people of five and over. And, uh, so that would mean, and just to clarify, when transmission in the county is substantial and high, then we would have the mask in place, then below that, throughout the district, it would be consistent that, that it would become mask optional.
Correct. That would, that would align those two.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is it? Would they, the motion?
Okay.
We'll probably go, a motion for that, that, um, we align our policy from the elementary school to match that of the junior, senior high school? Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to ask, do we have to revisit, um, is that just going to be a six-month, say like next month, it's low?
We can revisit anytime, yeah, we can change it.
Oh, I, so what I was saying is that it's, it's aligned with what the county health department's saying, so it would kind of automatically, if it were, let's hope, next month, and low transmission, then we would, we would then make that move, because it's consistent with the policy that we adopted. That's what I'm saying.
Can you also say, we have to be consistent from elementary through?
Yeah, that's exactly right, from K through twelve.
So you're addressing two things here. You're saying the, the transmissibility rate, and then also with K through twelve, so that's two facets of it, yeah, okay.
I'll tell you what, I think there's more discussion on that, but before we get on, do we have, do we have a second for Joe's motion, and then we can have further discussion?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Um, further on your question, if, if transmission rates in Allegheny County drop February first, and if we make this change, do we have to act as a board, or does the fact that the transmission rates drop, it automatically becomes, policy automatically changes?
That's correct, yeah. If the, if the rates drop to, to either lower or moderate, then the way the plan would be, well, the way the plan's currently written, and the way that the, the motion is on the table, um, it would change to automatic optional then.
So that's the motion on the table, everybody understand the motion?
I understand the question, I understand the motion, but, so if we're voting on this, my question is, because we're still talking about A, I still object to the universal masking.
Thank you.
But I agree with what you're saying, in terms of if we're gonna have that, then that's fine, I mean, are these separate issues, or, because if, if I'm voting on the universal masking, I'm gonna say no, even though I agree with your motion, you see what I'm saying?
So that motion already happened, we voted, it did not win, we can vote on this?
And so that's a separate issue, we can go back and, there can be another motion, but it. No, no, okay, that's, I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear, if I say yes on what you're proposing, I'm not saying yes to the universal masking, that's closed.
Correct. Well, Jude, if you vote yes to this, then you're in support of universal masking while the transmission rates in Allegheny County are high or substantial.
Okay, that's what I was asking, thank you.
Yes. So if you're voting in favor of his motion, his motion is to have universal masking, K through 12, while the rates are substantial or high, when it's low to moderate, then it's mask optional.
Okay.
That's his, that's his motion, the way I understood it. His motion is to take our current policy, which is as you stated, and evolve it to have.
No, I don't think you can separate.
K to six match K to 12.
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that was.
I wanna make sure you vote the way you want to vote.
Exactly, thank you.
Any other question? Yes, George.
Jim, who made that motion?
That was Director Apple.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or clarifications on the motion on the table? Maybe you wanna read that out?
Yeah.
Maybe you wanna read that out, Jim, because I want.
We wanna make sure that we're all, we all know we're voting.
Do you wanna reiterate your motion? Okay, I'll see if I can summarize it effectively. My motion would include aligning the K through six, the elementary school masking policy with that of the junior, senior high school, and secondary education, which would be masking in high and substantial transmission, and then masking optional in low to moderate. So if the, well, that's the motion, I don't wanna, I just, I understand, I, you understand? Does everybody else? Any questions or clarifications? No? The seconded by Director Sensick, Ms. Lawyer.
Director Shriver, I do have a clarification question, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, that's okay.
So it's my, it's my understanding that if any motion this evening fails, we revert back to the original Health and Safety Plan as it currently stands. So if the previous motion failed to remove the universal mask mandate, and then we vote on this, if this motion fails, we will revert back to K through six remains in mandatory masking, even if the transmission level drops, whereas the high school level is tied to the transmission level. Am I understanding that correctly, or am I overcomplicating that?
No, that, that is correct, but keeping with the spirit of the Health and Safety Plan, we did indicate in the plan that when vaccines become available for students between the ages of five to 12, or 12 and under, that we would revisit that aspect of the plan. So technically, we are revisiting it, but that was, my recommendation was to make sure that we revisit that aspect, because we said we were going to. Suzy, my interpretation, I believe your question and your interpretation is correct, and I believe we're, the motion on the table is to change the policy that we established in August or September based on new conditions, meaning vaccines are widely available. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Does that clarify, Suzy?
It does, and not to hit my hands, but I'm supportive of this, but I'm just asking for those on the board who might be more supportive of a less restrictive mask policy, that by voting no here, we may end up with a more restrictive policy, because that's what our current K six mandate is.
I believe you're correct, yep.
Excuse me, but isn't, you guys can make, we can do whatever we want, why are we imposing like, all of these weird scenarios that we have, we have to consider? You know that you can make whatever guideline we wanna make.
We're, we're in the process of doing that right now, we're looking at making adjustments.
You are overcomplicating it, if that was a question.
Jim, this is a question. I know. So the motion is on the table, Recording Secretary, Ms. Lawyer, would you mind doing a roll call vote for the motion on the table?
Jim, do I have a question for clarification? I'm a little confused, it seems to me that Joe Apple's motion would mean that those of us who want parents to eventually be the deciders on whether their kids wear masks or not masks, this would be a step toward what we want, right? Or is, would this kill our, our movements?
George, I believe I understand your question, and I believe you are correct, that the motion that Director Apple made would lessen the restriction for the K to six population once the overall infection rates in our local communities subsides. So I believe that was your question, I, the answer is yes, my understanding.
But, the thing is, that's based on people, populations of, at birth to 100 years old. That will never be low, it will never be low.
Yep. Thank you.
We don't, we don't know, George.
Yes, we do.
Potentially correct.
Vaccine, no worries.
We have some virus yet.
I guess the motion on the table is, we currently, our current Health and Safety Plan, we get a more restrictive requirement for the K to six group, and that was created back before vaccines were available for that age group. So Joe's motion was to remove that restriction, because vaccines are now available, and to make the K to six plan match the high school plan, the seven to 12 plan, which is a step toward being less restricted. So in a silo, regardless of the first motion that did not gain a vote, in this motion, would we want, as a group, to take the K to six plans and keep it in its current state, or relax it to match the seven to 12 plan? Does that answer your question?
Jim, yes, it answers my question. Thank you very much.
Sure, sure. If there are no other questions from any other board members, we'll vote, we'll have a roll call vote on the motion that's on the table.
Director Apple?
Yes.
Director Frank?
No.
Director Puskar?
Yes.
Director Sensick?
Yes.
Director Shriver?
Yes.
Director Vogliano?
No.
Director Zaleski?
Yes.
And Director Honschar?
No.
Thank you.
Motion passes five to three.
Five to three, so motion passes five to three, so the K to six is relaxed to meet the, or to match the seven to 12. Are there any other of Dr. Kreider's recommendations that the board finds individually appealing, or one, wanna address, like the Plexiglas and the capillar, anyone?
I'll make a motion to remove that, that's, I would make a motion to remove the Plexiglas and the capillar.
And directional signs.
Um, the directional signs too, we can, we can remove those, we're not following that.
Can we add the water fountains to that?
Sure.
Turning them back on?
Is there anything on there that we don't wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I think really that the rest of them, I don't know.
So the items that we had looked at previously, items C, D, E, F, what would you add to it, C, D, E, and F? F? Chris, do you mind modifying your motion?
Yeah, let me, let me, so I'm making a motion to remove the Plexiglas, turn the water fountains back on, remove the directional arrows.
And eliminate the.
And just stop the log, daily log.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
There is.
Moving seconded, does every board member understand the items C, D, E, and F that have been in that, and any questions or comments or feedback? Those remote, did you hear the motion on the table to remove Plexiglas, eliminate directional arrows, eliminate the logging, and turn the water fountains back on?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I understand.
Any, any other discussion or questions, board members? If not, I feel you're on the roll call vote on this one.
I may as well.
Okay. So, Ms. Lawyer, would you mind doing a roll call vote for these, for the side of this motion?
Director Apple?
Yes.
Director Frank?
Yes.
Director Honschar?
Yes.
Director Puskar? Director Sensick?
Yes.
Director Shriver?
Yes.
Director Vogliano?
Yes.
Director Zaleski?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Question, right out.
A handfuls remaining items, the Dr. Kreider recommendation to use PCR tests from accredited agencies when determining quarantine status, allowing a grade scale, say, of quarantine if they reach A four, and they can ignore that last day of quarantine, essentially, I'm paraphrasing greatly here. The next one was the antigen testing to, not make it required, but allow us to do it to change for May, May or June. And then lastly, just to reflect our ability to pursue vaccine clinic if somehow the macro conditions change and it makes sense, and you're asking for us to do something, it's a while to do that. I have like, some clarification, so G, H, I, and J, anyone not wanna see any of those items in a motion? Okay, anyone wanna make a motion for those?
Director Shriver, sorry, I'm muting, I would ask that the, the one day of exposure grade period be removed from the motion.
Vote on separately?
Do you wanna vote on that one separately?
I would like to, yeah.
Okay.
I would be adding.
Yep, we'll do that, so Jude, did I hear you say that you would make a motion for G, I, and J, which is, so moved, thank you very much. Moved and, here, second over here, second, so to clarify, the motion on the table is to G, I, and J, which is only consider rapid testing, PCR testing from accredited agencies when doing quarantine, perhaps pursuing, softening the pursuit of antigen testing, and then the last one was retaining the ability to do a vaccine clinic if at some point in future that comes, so that's the motion on the table, any discussion, any clarification, any questions? Anyone remotely have any questions about the motions on the table?
No.
Okay, then we'll vote, Ms. Lawyer, would you mind doing a roll call vote again?
Director Apple?
Yes.
Director Frank?
Yes.
Director Honschar?
Yes.
Director Puskar?
Yes.
Director Sensick?
Yes.
Director Shriver?
Yes.
Director Vogliano?
Yes.
Director Zaleski?
Yes.
All right, thank you, motion passes. On item number eight, which essentially is if we have a asymptomatic student that was quarantined, or was deemed for quarantine, but because of the delay of getting that result back, there's only one day left in their quarantine, we were looking to allow that, to waive that one day quarantine period essentially, do I have a motion for that item from anybody?
So moved.
Moved.
Moved, seconded, thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I asked for this to be pulled out, because I think it goes against the CDC recommendations for quarantine, which is what we faced our, our other decisions, or at least what I faced my other decisions in voting on. And so while I recognize that it's just one day, that someone might be in the classroom, if they could be positive, and we're not sure yet, it still represents one additional day that they could be infecting another student, and that student then would be missing classroom time. So, I would, that's my way of interpreting with this modification.
Understood, understood, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I personally view this, I recognize your logic, Suzy, I think the logic is sound, I am looking for every possible area that we can give anybody some over, some flexibility here, and given what I think I know about hearing that the transmissibility is most severe in the early days, I'm willing to support this, and that's the recommendation of the administration, so I get your point. Any other questions or comments? If not, Ms. Lawyer, would you do a roll call vote for item number eight, showing that quarantine?
Director Apple?
Yes.
Director Frank?
Yes.
Director Honschar?
Yes.
Director Puskar?
No.
Director Sensick?
Yes.
Director Shriver?
Yes.
Director Vogliano?
Yes.
Director Zaleski?
No.
Okay, thank you, motion carries. Dr. Kreider, we effectively acted on most of your, all of your recommendations.
I guess they were all of consideration.
To our board, we have a lot of unity on the topic of keeping kids safe, keeping kids at school, but there's a lot of differing opinions on what's the best way to do that. I think it's natural, because I don't have any issues for this.
Let parents choose.
If we can, if we can just finish our conversation, I appreciate it.
They should be part of that conversation.
So to the board, I think this gives us a good foundation for moving forward. I don't know what that next step is, I don't know what the decisions are, we need to continue to listen to feedback from the community, we need to continue to work with authorities.
They should start.
We need to continue to listen to authorities, and from all different sides, so if anybody's comments or comments on the board.
This was previous to when I was sitting on the board, but if I remember correctly.
Can you pull the mic? Sorry.
Sorry, okay. Before I was on the board, I believe there was a type of Google form, or some type of survey that went out, asking about, are you vaccinated, would you get your kids vaccinated, about masking, maybe we do something similar to that, so we can get more input from the community of people who are not wanting to attend meetings publicly? That's just it, I don't know, but.
There's no point, Jess, there's no point, Jess, there's no point. You're not gonna, you're not gonna listen.
But they're gonna turn on the water fountains, where every kid is going to lick it and drink out of it, and then put their mask back on, but they're so worried about my kid who has health problems, who should not wear a mask, insults.
Jim, according to CDC, you haven't been wearing a mask properly this entire time.
Nobody has.
You've been feeling it up the entire time, you are doing the wrong thing, you're not even listening to your own rules, how do you expect children to follow rules that you, a grown man, can't even follow? You can't follow your own rules, none of you can, everybody who voted no touched their mask multiple times, yanked it down, you were in violation of CDC guidelines, none of you did it.
We'll move on to section five in our meeting, Finance Section, we have several items on the agenda.
Kind of large, I don't know.
Items one through six, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following. Number one, the filing reports reflected in the January 2022 financial reports, the financial report summary. Number two, approve the bills for the period December 4th, 2021 through January 14th, 2022, the amount of lending of $544,437.05. Item number three, to approve that the Board of Education accepts the resolutions regarding the Act One Index Taxpayer Relief Act, stating that the district will not rate taxes above the index of 4.2% for the 2022-2023 school year. Number four, to approve the district's residential and commercial real estate tax assessment appeals program for the 2022 tax year as presented and as recommended by the solicitor. Number five, to approve the lease agreement between Carlington School District and State 62 for use of the school for the use of.
for the use of the school for the use of production any kind goes. Number six, to approve the Parkway West Career Technology Center 2022-23 general operating and joint for budget as seen. Do I have a motion for those six items?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second, since George.
George, thank you, Juve, seconded. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question on section, per subject five, three, Act One Index. Maybe this is something to discuss before I was appointed or was able to join the board again. But, so, from what I'm understanding, that where the motion said that we will not seek to exception to the index, not saying that we would vote for that anyway, but we're going to take that option and not have that. Is that, is that the, we're creating that?
Yes, yeah, I'd say we are agreeing right now not to raise taxes above the index of 4.2%.
Okay, so what does that mean in terms of like timeline and budget and that sort of thing? Can you help me out with that?
Sure. Basically, what that does is it takes away the, what it does is it takes away the necessity for us to have to go through a preliminary budget and to go through the process of getting it approved and then going for the exceptions, which, right now, with the way that the expenditures have been with the COVID and what the government does, is they set base years of how we match our special ed costs, our teachers' costs. And right now, it doesn't look like we would even qualify, we didn't qualify last year for any of the exceptions. So, basically, with the budget as we're looking at it right now, which I will be giving a presentation to you in February at the finance meeting, there's no need for us to raise taxes above that 4.2%, which would mean that we would have to go for those exceptions. So, at this point, looking at the budget, looking at what we have right now, we have professors' money, with the way that the year is going as far as the expenditures, I feel really comfortable that there's no need to go through that whole process. And basically, what we're doing as far as the timeline, we're actually moving the timeline up. We're going to attempt to get the budget passed by May instead of going into June, if, you know, without having to do this step. So, we'll explain it again, I can go over the timeline, or actually, I'll send you the timeline that we discussed, I believe it was in December.
Well, no, no, that, I mean, that answered my question. Because in the past, yeah, like you said, we had the proposed preliminary budget or something like that.
That's true, right. We basically attempt to put together a budget, which is not even close to really the final budget, just to show the need that we need to raise taxes above that 4.2% to balance our budget.
Right, and just to be clear, I'm asking the question not because I, you know, I have this sense that we need to.
Right.
It's just that, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that we didn't take an option that we might need to exercise. You're saying that you're not seeing that.
Just looking preliminarily, we can run numbers, and maybe it doesn't look like we would qualify for any additional with the exception. So, it really is futile not to, you know, just to go through the process, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll add one thing too, because the other thing we look at is the five-year forecast, and we've got that big hump we need to get over. So we did look at, you know, even if we don't need it necessarily balance the budget, is there a scenario where we might actually beat the gray sphere? And we don't have a scenario where we could need to do that, even looking at five years. Because we can, you know, balance it out as we're approaching. So, there's not a, the short term and even the long term concern, which shouldn't be necessary. It's just something we can manage. Does that make sense? It does.
It depends. I'm not saying we could concur on it, just.
No, we don't, no, we don't. It's like, we're not going to have to exceed the index all the way to the hump. We can manage it under the index, is what we expect.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote on the section five's items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. Under section six, we have quite a few items, so how about we split it up? I'll entertain a motion to approve items one through eight. Number one, to approve the resignations and additions to the 2021-2022 activities supplemental list, with resignations and new sponsors as submitted. Stipend for supplemental position holders is contingent upon completion of the full school year and will be prorated in the event of a shorter canceled season due to unforeseen circumstances. Number two, to approve the additions to the 2021-2022 athletics supplemental list with new sponsors as submitted. Stipend for supplemental position holders is contingent upon completion of the full school year and will be prorated in the event of a shorter canceled season due to unforeseen circumstances. Number three, to approve the leave of absence for employees number CFT 2122-10 and SCA 2122-11. Number four, to approve the retirement of biology teacher Maureen Verlageri effective January 21st, 2022, for the terms of the settlement agreement and release. Number five, to approve the letter of intent to retire submitted by class three nurse assistant Jean Byerly effective February 21st, 2022, and consistent with the terms of the Secretary of Cafeteria Aids Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number six, to approve the resignation of Jane Carr as general food worker effective January 14th, 2022. Number seven, to approve the resignation of Eve Adamson as life skills autistic support aide effective January 17th, 2022. And number eight, to approve an award position of the class three elementary life skills autistic support aide to Jamie Curtin, with the start date to be determined, consistent with the terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. I have a motion for items one through eight under section six.
Seven.
Second.
Move with the second, thank you. Any discussion?
But Jim, I have a question on the resignation of Mrs. Byerly. Did I hear it's a retirement or resignation?
That is a retirement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or clarifications? If not, we'll vote on items one through eight. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. The second section of items under section six is item nine, and I want, so I'll entertain a motion to approve number nine. To approve an award position of class three elementary library aide to Kathleen Pharaoh effective December 10th, 2021, and consistent with the terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 10, to approve the following reassignments due to the elimination of class three elementary library clerical aide positions effective January 10th. The following reassignments remain using the bumping process outlined in the SCA bargaining agreement. Deborah Klein, instructional aide. Cheryl Irwin, life skills autistic support aide. Justin Lambert, personal care aide. Holly Burnett chose to return to class four playground lunchroom aide position. Number 11, to approve the employment of Holly Burnett from the position of a class three substitute at Crafton Elementary, consistent with the terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 12, to approve an award position of custodian at Carnegie Elementary to Sean Valman effective January 3rd, 2022, and in accordance with the custodial maintenance collective bargaining unit agreement. Number 13, to approve Megan Thomas as people services secretary, start date to be determined, in accordance with the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 14, to approve Heidi Peck to the position of lunchroom playground aide at Crafton Elementary, effective date to be determined, consistent with the terms of the SCA Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 15, to approve Carleen Repola for the position of long-term substitute physics teacher at College of Junior Senior High School for the remainder of the 21-22 school year, with the start date to be determined, consistent with the terms of the Carling Federation of Teachers Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Number 16, to approve Emily Brozovic for the position of long-term substitute teacher at Carnegie Elementary effective January 10th, 2022, consistent with the terms of the CFT Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. And lastly, number 17, to approve Jennifer Rizzo for the position of long-term substitute intervention specialist at Carnegie and Crafton Elementary, consistent with the terms of the Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Start date is to be determined. Do I have a motion for those items nine through 17?
So moved.
Moved and a second?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. Under section 17, we have two activities. Doctor Kreider, is there anything you had in mind for that section?
No.
Okay. Under section eight, old business, any director of any old business they would like to bring up? If not, move to new business. Any director of any new business they'd like to bring up?
I do, Jeff.
Yes.
Now that Director Apple was back, and I feel like he's much better prepared to serve as vice president than I am. I would like to resign as vice president and move to restate Director O'Brien as vice president.
Thank you very much. Any, I guess, is that an official motion?
Well, it's an official motion, it needs a second if we're to.
Right, okay.
I second.
All right, thank you, George. The motion to have Director Sensick resign as vice president has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions for the board? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Director Apple stinks.
I'm glad I called for it, but she chose to.
I chose to.
And the motion. And the motion passes. And Director Sensick, thank you very much for your. I did, I think John and I received an email today. Director O'Brien, and knowing that Director Apple was back on the board, Director O'Brien had emailed John and myself and asked if she could resign her post from Parkway because she thought Director Apple would be a better student to serve in that role. So, John, can you confirm if you got that email? So, I guess on behalf of Director O'Brien, I'll submit that she is asked to allow her to resign from her role representing Parkway West.
You're going to make a motion to accept the resignation of Director O'Brien and appoint Mr. Apple, is that my understanding?
That was Director O'Brien's recommendation, correct?
Well, the motion's coming on the floor. Director O'Brien can't make a motion vicariously. So, somebody who is present, or present virtually, needs to make that motion.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the resignation of Director O'Brien as Parkway committee representative and appoint Joe Apple as the Parkway president.
Moved, is there a second for that?
A second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. Joke's staying for no.
I'm going to give this one. You know, abstaining doesn't cause one, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Have to get that on the record.
So then, Bill, I assume we need one last motion, because we currently have a vacancy for vice president.
That was done in the last.
Do you want to do another, the same one? All right, excellent. Then, Joe, welcome.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other, any other new business from a director? Any last questions or comments from the board?
Do I have to stand up, or is this fine?
Awesome.
So, I mean, just to clarify, according to the flow chart, according to the CDC, kids, in order to properly wear a mask, they shouldn't touch them or engage them in any way, right? Unless they wash their hands before or after. I want you to clarify right now that you voted to keep masks. That you are holding kids, children, to a standard that you, in this meeting, and Kelly, you, in this meeting, and everyone else who voted no, couldn't hold yourself to that same standard. Is that correct?
I agree that I touched my mask.
Yes, did you wash your hands before or after?
I washed my hands before the meeting, but not.
But not during and not, you know, okay. Do you acknowledge that you're not wearing a mask properly? According, according to the CDC, you shouldn't touch it without washing your hands before and after. Do you openly say that you are not wearing your mask correctly? The answer is yes, just say yes. Own it, Jim.
I'm not familiar with.
Oh, my God.
Jim, I'm going to show you.
Hold on, we're not, this is not a question and answer situation.
No, you're giving Jim a chance to actually stand up and do the right thing. Okay, Jim, you're a leader, you were elected by the people. This is your chance to take ownership of this. Just say yes, Jim.
I'm advising the board not to engage in a debate and answer questions back and forth. Mr. Schreiber, that's my advice to the board, and do you first?
I understand.
Jim, I would just like to say one thing. I understand that you guys are in a really difficult spot. This is hard for you to make everybody happy. That's really not the job of the board. You're, we haven't answered one question about education in this entire meeting. We've talked an awful lot about masks, we've talked about protocols, we've looked at flow charts, we've talked about quarantines. We did not talk about mental health. We did not talk about how we accommodate children that you're blocking from the school. They're not being given access to education. There has been no mention of what are you going to do to accommodate those kids who are falling behind in classes because of these guidelines? I mean, somebody at some point should talk about education.
I think the entire board, any administration, is very sensitive to the fact that we are all, on one level or another, being affected negatively by the pandemic. And for some, the masks are a huge accelerant of that anxiety and whatever else. So, the district is very much sensitive to mental health concerns. Dr. Kreider just voiced an opinion that he would like to share our current approaches to mitigating mental health issues at our next meeting. It is, it has not gone unnoticed. Any individual family that feels that their child is suffering exceptionally from this, continue to reach out to the district. If you don't feel you're getting a beating quickly enough, reach out again, be persistent.
What do we need a beating for? My pediatrician says, take the mask off.
Right.
That's the end of the story.
That's right.
Take the mask off. Stop harassing me and my family because we have different views. And you guys hold the power, let me alone. Let my kids have their education in a brick and mortar building where they belong with their pediatrician's recommendations. You don't know it, Mr. Kreider doesn't know it, nobody here can tell me that you aren't harming my children. You're forcing harm on my kids every single day.
Yep.
You are hurting children. All of you, own it. All I'm saying is, take my note, take it with my religious exemption, either one, leave me alone. Let my kids go to school. If we were pre-pandemic and my kid had to wear a mask for some medical reason, would you make me go through a 504 plan? And would you take that mask off of their face before they walked in the building? The answer is no. And every single one of you sitting there know that. You're harassing us because my child is being harmed by something and you're okay with that.
It's long-term harm, still dealing with it with my oldest. She wanted to come tonight to talk to you, and I told her no. I didn't tell her to. I said, no, I don't want you coming because it's no point, Vivian, they don't care how you feel. They don't care how it's affected your life. It does not matter to them how their choices have affected you. It does not matter to the superintendent, it doesn't matter to any of them.
We can't even look up while we're talking.
Like, it's, it's.
It's disrespectful, look at this public health.
Like the 504, you have no policy to stand on requiring 504s. You don't. You simply don't have in there.
We have exemptions.
A 504 needs you to make significant medical accommodations for my child. What accommodations are letting them breathe free air, which is a PA constitutional right? There are no accommodations. It's because it does not fit your viewpoint.
That's right.
That's the problem. You're harming my child every day because it doesn't fit your viewpoint. Take my, take something. I've given you two forms of asking for an exemption. Take one of them, leave me alone, let my child go to school, unharmed. That's all we ask. And that's the problem, is it's been 11 days, 11 school days.
A month for us, over a month.
And nobody cares. I get, I get, what state or federal? I get, I get, what, what state or federal required laws are you denying a religious exemption?
Right.
There are none.
Where is it?
That was in your letter, Mr. Kreider.
Yes.
Please cite to me what state or federal law. There isn't one.
Or your own policy. I don't know, because you don't have.
You have no legal background, you have no legal backing to harm my child anymore. I do not consent, their pediatrician does not consent.
I want to end with a hot tip for the board members who vote against parental choice. One, do not post pictures on Facebook of you out and about in large gatherings with your family without masks on. Two, don't go out in public in large gatherings without masks on because the public is gonna see you, we know about it. So if you're gonna force my kids to go through a six-plus hours a day, you better damn well wear that mask when you're out in public.
When you're playing soccer?
Lead by example.
Are there any other comments?
Are we gonna get an apology for the damage you've inflicted on my daughter? And yeah, I do want an apology, I do, I do, because we're still dealing with it. She won't even go to youth group because of your policy. Do you understand? We're still dealing with it. She's still dealing with it. So when you can just say, oh, well, it's just a nice thing to wear the mask, you have no data, that has given you data, you have no data to back up this policy at all, none. The Allegheny County Health Department may be telling you what to do, but out of the other side of their mouth, they have not enforced an indoor masking mandate. So they must not really think that what the CDC is saying is really that bad, or we'd have an indoor mask mandate for the entire county. There is none. So why is it when my husband works a Penguins game, he has to mask on camera, but the other, how many thousands of people in the arena aren't masked? This is ridiculous at this point. Like, it makes no sense. And like, in terms of like mask optional, we're in the minority in the state right now in terms of like having a mask mandate.
And the county.
And the county. Most other school districts have a mask optional policy that respects religious or strongly held beliefs, which we all have, because we've all submitted that, and medical exemptions. Like, we've done everything we can to be able to have our religious beliefs respected by you legally, we have a law behind us, and you don't have any policy to stand on. I mean, seriously, could you imagine if I did my job this way as code enforcement officer, went around the borough, making stuff up and saying it's my interpretation of what the ordinance says? I have to cite every single thing I do, or I can't, I can't do my job. You don't have any policy to stand on to require this family, this family, or us to have a 504 plan or not permit a child to come into school. And every day you make those kids mask, you're screwing with their heads because their doctor and their parents tell them not to wear a mask. Then they walk in the door, you wait till they come to the door, wait till the parents leave, then you make a mask, and the whole day, they have to deal with the fact that they know they're not supposed to wear it, but the adults are supposed to respecting it, they're telling them to wear it, and this screws with their heads, and you don't care. You obviously don't care because you don't address any of our issues, not in emails. You can tell solicitor, you can tell them not to engage here in the meeting, that's fine. They don't engage me in the emails either, they don't engage me when I've asked them to personally sit down with me and talk to me about it. I get no engagement as a resident. I've offered my cell phone, everyone knows where I live. I don't care. Someone, if any of them would like to talk to me about it, or talk to Vivian about it and what you've done to her, that'd be great, I'd appreciate it. But I get no response as an email, I get nothing. So if we're frustrated, it's because, you know, we vote, we come here, it's like, I might as well talk to this wall, I email, I might as well talk to this wall. I mean, it's like, there's no response, and you're forcing the staff to do things. Like, my kids, Vivian, Lizzie comes home every day and tells me who she saw at school that wasn't masked, every day. She makes a mental note of it, okay? So I know every day staff's not masked. I know that not everybody believes in this. And then you're making your staff complicit in something that they may ethically not agree with. So you're, you're implying them and you're making them do stuff that they don't want to do by forcing kids to mask that have medical exemptions.
Is there anybody else?
I'm done, I'm just saying, you have no policy and you have yet to cite any to us.
We do have policy.
Okay, one of three of one, what is it then? Where does it say that a child, a parent has to take a 504 plan or their child cannot attend school? Where is it? Doesn't exist.
Yeah, we sent an email every day and got nothing. There's no policy.
There's no, I've looked through the policy. Nowhere in the policy and procedures does it say you can deny a child access to education based on whether or not they've had a 504 meeting or not? A 504 meeting, which in each instance, there was none offered at the time. It was like this indefinite nebulous, oh, well, you can't come unless your kid's masked, though it causes her face pain or makes it hard for her to breathe or whatever, we don't care, you have to have this meeting, oh, and we're not gonna return your calls and schedule the meeting, and then we're gonna make you go through all this, it, there's no policy for it. They, they have medical exemptions, we have a medical exemption, you just ignored it. You just flat out ignored it. You know it caused physical harm, my doctor said so. No accommodations, just, you can't do it unless you have this nebulous 504 plan, which doesn't apply. You're fitting a policy into something that doesn't apply.
You guys are all okay that our kids are going until this 504 meeting is set up.
Right.
You're okay continuing to harm my child, my children, until the 504 plan is set up.
To our solicitor's point, we should not engage in a whole lot of back and forth, but.
We have had back.
Your question is, every member of this board, every member of the staff does care about every single child in the district. If your child wants to come into school right now, based on the health and safety plan we have, they have to wear a mask, if you feel that's an undue burden to you or your family, your child, schedule a 504 meeting and, and have a conversation about it, and the district is looking to make every accommodation for every family possible. So why have I been 11-plus school days? I, we can't schedule a 504 meeting, hurt your staff, until they've done observation, until they've consulted with, no, take my note and leave me alone. Leave my children alone.
Like Montor, like Montor, Montor just takes the medical exemptions, that don't require 504s. If you're so worried about the liability, which is what this comes down to, you're afraid someone's gonna get infected and sue you, I get it, then have a waiver form that these families can sign in addition, saying that they'll take on all the liability, not the district, and if they get somebody sick, it's their fault, and then you're, then you're free of it, okay? But like, districts, not all districts act this way. You are choosing to make this difficult. Like, there are districts around us that don't do this, they just take the medical exemption like they would for a sprained ankle, done. There's no 504 plan. Like, if, if, if the doctor says the answer is to take the mask off, why do you need a 504 plan for that? Why? Because if, I'm gonna tell you, if a parent's gotten to the point where they have to take their kid to a doctor, it means you're not addressing the situation. I can tell you that was the case with Vivian. I can tell you that. I got to the point where I'm like, well, okay, they ignore my religious exemption, I'm gonna take her to a doctor because it's physically hurting her face and causing her anxiety, and they're not doing anything about it. Then I get the medical exemption, get in line with the illegal mandate, and you're still with it. So it's like a lose-lose for every family here because you don't respect their rights, whatsoever.
Is there anybody else that has a question or concerns? I'd like to turn to the board.
I do want to say one thing. I mean, it has to do with masks, but it's also, if this virus is so harmful to children, why are the teachers asking for hand sanitizer, Clorox wipes, and Kleenexes? If it's that bad, the teacher should never, ever have to ask for that, that kind of stuff. And why are we turning, I mean, if it, if this virus is that harmful to our kids, that they, you guys have to put a mask on them, why are you opening up these water fountains? Reasons.
I, my personal belief is that water fountains aren't a, a problem, so the recommendation from the administration is to open it up, and again, I'm looking to make as many accommodations as I can, and I think the board isn't saying both, so.
But yeah, why are these teachers asking?
If you prefer to shut down water fountains.
You're sanitizing.
Hand washing would be the best.
If this virus is so harmful to our children that you are making my kids who have medical exemptions continue to wear a mask, not one teacher in this school district should ever have to ask for hand sanitizer, Clorox wipes, Kleenexes, and there should be air purifying machines in every single room.
I agree, and we have, the facilities directors put air purifying equipment in all, the entire district, and every staff member has access to all of the sanitizers and wipes and disinfectants.
They obviously don't because they have a wish list in the beginning of the school year, and then they have a wish list halfway through, and then.
They're still asking.
They are still asking for this kind of, these things.
This district got.
Yeah, I'll, I'll discuss that then. We have plenty of resources in that regard, they should not be asking our community and